You could just give us a two-minute summary of your biography and why it is that you're seeking this office.
It can be short.
It can be short.
We encourage it short.
Don't get me wrong.
We could get it to thirty seconds. You're suddenly moving up the list.
Well, I decided to do this because I feel like to make the system work, we need people with experience. People who have a record of success, people who can reach across the aisle, work with anybody, and get stuff done. And I have a whole career of getting stuff done, starting in housing, moving on to the environment, transportation, public transit in particular, and local-state relations. I have a habit of taking on kamikaze missions and all of those things, and I've been very successful at doing that. So I thought, experience, skills, a record of success, I should do this.
I'm sorry, you gotta give us a little bit more of a biopsia for where you were raised. Oh, you're not though?
I'm not, I was just taking it from the ground. That's okay. Well, I started out as an affordable housing advocate statewide. I lobbied the state legislature to increase the authority of the state housing agency, which we're now benefiting from. I introduced the community development corporation legislation, rehab, pre-development loan, all those kinds of things. I lobbied the governor to expand the governor's housing conference. At that time, to talk about rent control and all kinds of issues. And I could tell you stories about that later, about the reaction to those issues. From there, I went to the city of Salem. I worked on public safety issues with the Mid Valley Mayor's Coalition to decentralize the prison system.
Approximately, this is what year?
This is sometime in the late eighties.
Okay.
And got a lot of stuff done for them, got them some fire trucks from the state. Then I went to DEQ. I carried the state's update of their Clean Air Plan in a Republican legislature. Got that through, also got the authority to make sure that Oregon had a more... ability to be more stringent than the federal government. Then I went to work for Governor Kitzhager for two terms. I was his liaison to the cities and counties around the state, worked on principles of partnership between state and local government, and created the foundation for Oregon Solutions. And then I came up here, went to work for Trinam. The kamikaze mission was to secure the resources to build out the light rail system and the silicon bridge, which I did successfully. I've also been the chair of several boards. Most recently, I was the chair of the Oregon Province Health System Board, where I pushed for policies around quality and the first equity policy. I also worked with the board to create a statewide system going to all the different hospitals around the state, convincing their boards that they should do the community assessment, a needs assessment, and they should get grant money to do that, which I was able to secure for them. So in a nutshell, that's my career, and I'm a childless cat lady.
Eli?
All right. Yep, I was born in Santa Maria, California. First came to Portland in 2001. My wife's from Lentz, and I spent some time in the military doing a bunch of different things. I was a civil affairs specialist. I was an aircraft radar repairer. I was an intel analyst and eventually a helicopter pilot. Two tours in Afghanistan, flying all kinds of different missions. Got real tired of that, decided I wanted to do something more productive and not move my family around anymore, and really thought a lot about community and social fabric, and it's kind of the same time the US is starting to see some impacts there. So got out, came back here, decided I was gonna find some meaningful work with the city, and didn't get the head of the community garden program job I applied for. So the next one was the police bureau, and so for the last seven years, I've been working in District Four as a police officer, the last three years or so, on the bike squad downtown. And, I mean, that's really how I ended up in this. So for seven years, you know, I spend more time talking to homeless people, people addicted to drugs, people with mental illness, than I do my own family or people who don't suffer from those things. And after a few years, you know, you just start asking, like, where is the plan? Like, we're gonna do something about this, right? And nothing, you know, even though there's lots of talk and lots of money, I never saw anything actually change on the ground, like, at all. And so at some point, I just thought, you know, I'm gonna try to do something about this. So via the police bureau, I've been an enhanced crisis intervention team member for four, five years. And I think my unique sort of offer here is that, like, looking back at policy from sort of the firsthand experience with these issues and how we've been trying to get traction on the ground.
Thank you. Stan?
Thank you. It was not my lifelong ambition to run for political office, but I've been so deeply engaged in our community since moving here from New York 21 years ago with my wife Suzanne. I've been deeply involved in neighborhood livability as president of the Neighborhood Association Pearl District for seven years. I've been an arts leader, president of Oregon Children's Theater. I'm a co-founder of the Northwest Community Conservancy with Homer Williams, where we provide humanitarian and security services in the Pearl District, a model that we hope we could spread elsewhere in the city. I've also led an initiative to ban gas leak lowers and transition to electric. We finally got an ordinance passed in March at City Council. Took us seven years to get there, to get that passed, resistance along the way. But I am very persistent. I really believe in the three Ps: persistence, persistence, persistence. So I am a problem solver. I'm a person of action. My background, I have a bachelor degree in civil engineering, which makes me very systematic and very detail-oriented. But I also have a master's in urban planning from Columbia University, and I tend to have a holistic view of things. I decided to run. Been talking about it with the family for a while, and when my oldest granddaughter said, "Papa, this is your career punctuation," I was in. And my biggest priority and what's really moved me to run for office, aside from all the challenges we have that we have to work on, is our new form of government. This is an opportunity to reset our priorities, set sound policy, and really take action. And I feel that I am a consensus builder. We're gonna be... We're going to need to be able to all work together within our districts. We need to figure out how three councils are gonna work together within a district, and we have to also work across the districts. And we have to make sure we don't fall into the silos that our government has been in for such a long time. So that is my first priority, getting a functioning government that rebuilds trust and confidence in our government and to restore the services for which we pay our taxes.
Stan, can you tell us what you're doing in New York?
I've been in the construction business. In earlier years, commercial construction. In later years, I was involved in home building.
What does that mean? You were financing it?
No, 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 no. I was... So I had... We had a family business back in New York, which we had a woodworking factory. We had a design component, and we were contractors. So we built out mostly retail spaces in different parts of the country.
This is your business?
This was our family business back in the day. And then in later years, I got involved in home building, mostly in the New York metropolitan area. We actually... I retired a long time ago, but my wife and I actually... We did one project here in Portland down in Selwood. We built some homes, and we had purchased and sold some properties. We were trying to develop, but I got to the point where I said, "I don't need to do this anymore. I wanna sleep at night." Thank you.
Chad? Yeah, my name is Chad Lichten. I was born in Huntsville, Alabama, to two teenage parents. By the time I was born, my mom had already suffered from addiction and really severe mental health problems from a frighteningly early age. I was able to get out of that house and go to college, the College of Charleston, and then go get a PhD in leadership and policy at Vanderbilt University. I focused on out-of-school learning for kids, because I know that about two-thirds of the variance in student outcomes is all about what happens not inside the classroom. It's about, like, the social context of education and what opportunities you have outside of school. I got a tenure-track job at the University of Hong Kong and was there for five years. I did a little bit of consulting for the Asian Development Bank. That resulted in a co-authored book called Shadow Education, which is kind of all about out-of-school learning. I helped build research capacity in different places like Cambodia so that they could have their own knowledge creation and not rely on people that look like me to come tell them sort of how they should evaluate their school systems. When it was no longer safe to be in Hong Kong, we started thinking about where we wanted to raise our families, so we moved halfway around the world to come to Portland and have loved it. We've been here 11 years. I saw an opportunity in my neighborhood and a need for more out-of-school learning opportunities. I started Rose City Chess at Hayhurst Elementary School, and it has grown to be about 20 schools per year. We also do camps. It's a small business. It's not a nonprofit. But I was also elected the president of the Oregon Classic Chess Federation, which serves about 1,000 kids.
What's the annual revenue of Rose City Chess?
Under half a million. Yeah.
And are you a chess master of some sort?
No. I learned because they needed a coach. And I became a decent club strength player, but when they get good enough to beat me, they go to our master in residence.
So do you know Phil Margolin?
Yeah.
So he does chess for success?
He did, and that actually also started at Hayhurst. They shut that program down, and that's kind of where I jumped in, because I didn't want the school to lose its program.
So schools have contracts with you to come in and teach and play chess?
That's right.
Gotcha.
Yeah. And so we have about 10 employees. I'm, you know, one of the few people that started and run a business that serves the people in District Four. We're at most of the public schools in southwest Portland and a lot of schools in Bearden School District and even out in Ben Lepine. So I'm used to working with bureaucracy and figuring out a way to serve people. I think that I bring to City Council a breadth of perspective, because I've been involved with, like, training policy leaders that are coming from around the world. Yes, not a breadth of perspective you get very often in local government, but also a depth of knowledge of our neighborhoods. I've worked with, you know, hundreds of families, maybe over 1,000 families in District Four. There's a lot of people that can do a great job representing the interests of certain lobbyists. I'm not trying to do that. I'm trying to represent the people that live in this district. I've also knocked on thousands of doors. I think campaign-wide, we're over 9,000 doors. I've been at over 5,000 of them. So I know where people don't feel safe with their kids walking to school. I know where people don't feel safe pushing their grandparents, because there's not a curb cutout. I've just really tried to be the person that's gonna fight for the people that live in this district.
Great. Mitch?
My name is Mitch Green. I live in West Portland Park. I was born in Rock Springs, Wyoming, in 1981, as you've got on the record there. I was also born to teenage parents. It was a really poor part of the state, and my parents, you know, my father was a union member, his father was a union member, so you did relatively okay, but not so on my mother's side. And so... Oh, United Association.
What, industry?
Picketing, yeah. So that comes into the story later. So, you know, I was one of three children born to teenage parents, like Chad. My father moved us out to Portland in 1986, because there was no work during the kind of recession that hit late, the late eighties. It really hit the construction industry really hard, high interest rates, you know. So we moved out to Portland so he can work in the shipyards. He's a welder by trade. And so I grew up in this kind of union household. My mother was a stay-at-home mother, which I credit to being sort of setting me up with some of those non-outside classroom impacts that kind of make the difference, I think, in outcomes. I was the first person in my family to go to college, and I went to Western Washington University out of the chute when I graduated in 2000, but I was a non-traditional student. No one in my family had ever gone to college. So I went up there. I read a lot of books, but I didn't go to all my classes. And I just had a middling performance year. And I came back at that, the summer after my first year, and I sort of stepped back and I said, "Well, how am I gonna pay for this?" My dad was cosigning my loans, but he was gonna pull that away based on my performance. And so he was like, "You're gonna move home. You're gonna join the union. You're gonna start a family like I did." And I said, "Well, or I can go talk to recruiter." So I went down and talked to the Army Reserve Recruiter. I joined civil affairs. I didn't know you were a CA specialist. So I did an enlistment in the Army, Army Reserve as a civil affairs NCO. That brought me overseas to Afghanistan, where I deployed with a CA team. We did a bunch of humanitarian work, civil military operations, kind of along with the special operations community. And what I realized over there, I think as a young person, was that we've got... The government has enormous capability to move resources, people, all the way across the globe with a high degree of efficiency, when it was fighting a war, right? And when I came back and got out of the Army, I looked at our country, I looked at our local and state governments, and I didn't see that same level of commitment to the administrative capacity. So I really wanted to understand why we spend our resources on fighting wars and not, you know, universal healthcare and, you know, the sort of, you know, social democrat type of policy ideas. And so I went and enrolled back in school, straightened out as an adult, and I returned at Portland State University to do my undergraduate degree in economics, and I did quite well. So that took me out to a PhD program in Missouri, the University of Missouri in Kansas City, for economics. And I was drawn to that program because there were some folks there kind of pushing the envelope on monetary theory and policy. One of my advisors, Stephanie Kelton, who has a New York Times bestseller called The Deficit Myth, and she worked for Bernie Sanders in 2016 as his chief economist. And so I was exposed to this kind of, you know, outside-the-box thinking on economic policy. But I ended up doing my PhD in something much more regional and local, which was like the history of economic development in the Columbia River Basin, with particular focus on Bonneville Power Administration. So I chased the academic world for a little while, but then I got homesick. I moved home. A few longed by. I'm sorry about that. But I found a career as an economist at the Bonneville Power Administration, which is where I have been for the last decade. I recently resigned, because I couldn't do both, run for this race, stay in this race, I should say, and continue to work there.
So... We need to keep moving pretty quickly here. All right. But I might do the first question next, and we'll move this way. As you all know, this is essentially a legislative body that you're being elected to. Management issues are being delegated to a city administrator overseen by the mayor, and you're going to be lawmakers. So what's the first resolution that you will introduce at Portland City Council? Mitch, we'll start with you. One minute, please.
Yeah, I think the most urgent thing that we all need to do, whoever's elected, outside of our individual policy priorities, is to make it much faster, to permit and site the treatment centers that we need to roll out in this city. I looked at the Arbor Lodge incident and, you know, the long-term backlog of permitting. I think that's inexcusable. And so I have plans for social housing. I have plans for energy investments and all that. But I think that it's really critical that we need to move very fastly on making possible the sort of deflection and treatment apparatus of this.
Great. Chad?
Yeah, similar. And I was gonna start with immediately signing and permitting 20 new sites for high-quality shelters. For me, high-quality shelter means that it's a private room with a door that locks with onsite services, all the things that somebody needs to become healthy and whole, has reasonable accommodation for pets, possessions, and companions. Yeah, it's kind of a fiasco that's happening. Arbor Lodge and the city needs to take some of the blame for that for not citing and permitting. At that point, the county can take their pick from the 15 sites that they like the best. We need to pave the way for them.
Great.
I'll segue, excuse me, a little bit on what Chad said. I think we need to continue. We have a humanitarian crisis. We need to get people off the streets with services. We've had some success with Safe Rest Villages, tiny, tiny home villages, and the larger temporary alternative shelter sites. I would like to see us build more of those. But we have to be careful how we do it, because we cannot impact neighborhoods. We have to work with our communities when we open up these facilities. Our first priority, getting people off the streets, and we need to work better with the county and figure that out.
I think it's the same thing, but shorter timescale. I'd like to treat it as like an emergency, emergency. Put the Bureau of Emergency Management actually as lead here, assign them some extra resources from fire, police, tie in PSR, and actually attempt to manage the street camping.
These are all great ideas. I want to adopt them all. I think that I lean towards, actually what Eli was saying, about emergency management and some sort of policy around public safety. I'd like to see us reactivate or activate the local public safety coordinating council and see more coordination between all levels of public safety in the region. And the same goes for housing. I'd like to have some sort of a policy around aligning the city, the county, metro, the state, for all of us to pull in the same direction to solve these problems. I think some of the issues we're talking about here, we're gonna face a really bad budget, guys. I don't know that we're gonna be able to do all the things that you want to do. So aligning the city and the county in particular, because the county has the resources to do what you guys were talking about. We don't have those resources. We're gonna have a budget deficit of 40 to 100 million, and that's gonna be difficult to deal with. But I would prioritize absolutely public safety and the homeless on-street camping as a part of that.
Well, that leads to an obvious next question. I will start with you and then work around the table.
I always have to.
Again, one-minute answer. What's the first place you'd look to make cuts in an austerity budget?
Well, I think that the new administration is a little fat. I think that we can actually find some savings and even more consolidation. I don't know that we need six big pods or whatever we wanna call them. I think we can consolidate there. But that's not a lot of money. I guess I'm not exactly sure where I would cut right now, because I don't know enough about the budget. I just feel like we need to refocus on essential services. We have a real deficit in asset management. We have a lot of crumbling infrastructure. That's where I'd like to focus. I'm not sure where I find the money for that exactly, honestly.
Okay. Eli?
Yeah, I mean, I think the PSF supplement is gonna have to continue to plug holes. And I also think that we're gonna find a lot of redundancies as we sort of begin to consolidate the whole chain of command. So we're gonna find a lot of little different bureaus. We're doing the exact same thing. It can be streamlined.
Yeah, exactly what I was gonna say. I think there's a lot of money to be found in the bureaus. I think there is redundancy. We need to consolidate some of the activities that, for example, communications activities that each bureau has that can be consolidated. That's where I think is a good place where we're gonna find some funds.
When you mean communication activities, what do you mean?
So each bureau has a way that they communicate, and they have so many people doing that.
No, you're talking about the spokesperson industrial complex, right?
Yeah, that's a great term. Appreciate that. That's exactly right.
Two things come immediately to mind, and I think it is, like, you know, looking for every source of savings. I mean, the contract for Downtown Clean and Safe is comically corrupt right now. It's just got massive kickbacks to pay for lobbyists who lobby against many of the people that are represented or serve by Downtown Clean and Safe. So I think that there's a couple million dollars that can be found there. The other one is that if we can get shelters stood up and running, then we will save a lot of the city resources. We have massive overtime charges right now with the fire department, because they're being run ragged. Same with our police force and other things. If people are sheltered, we have less need for so much money being spent on these emergency responses, and the costs get transferred to the county instead of the city.
Yeah, I'll just start by saying I am less convinced than others that we're gonna face such a large budget shortfall. The Fed is cutting interest rates. The migration patterns have started to reverse, and there's green shoots for growth. That being said, I don't wanna evade the question. So I think until we get a really good audit about the expenditures, particularly on the tax exemption side for the inclusionary zoning program at the city, I think we need to put a freeze on that. Because I think we've put a lot of money out the door with little knowledge of the system.
We put a freeze on the inclusionary zoning?
The tax exemption piece of that, yeah.
Okay.
This next question, Stan, we'll start with you. And again, we'll just move around the table. It's for everybody. As Olivia has pointed out, there's a lot of overlap between the county and the city on homelessness in particular, and a lot of friction between the county and the city on homelessness. Would you stay in the Joint Office of Homeless Services, or would you pull the city out of that partnership?
Well, for now, yes, because I think we have to find a way for them to work together. I think there's been a little better collaboration lately, but I think we're gonna know by the middle of October whether or not the city is gonna pull out in the last IGA, the agreement. The city set some stipulations for the county. County has not been able to measure outcomes. They don't have a data system, and it's gonna take three years to have a system to really know who's on the street. So I think we have to see how that plays out. In all honesty, I might say I'm a little bit cynical about it, whether or not that's gonna work. Ultimately, I would, and this is way down the road, I would like to see a consolidation of the city and the county, so we have one entity working on all our issues. But that's way down the road.
Sure.
Eli? Yeah, as of right now, I'm gonna say a lot of the joint office. It has not been very effective, and if we wanna treat this like an emergency, the county has not wanted to deal with the sort of short-term problem. They've wanted to build housing, maybe look at long-term shelters and stuff like that. We have to do like the triage right now, and that money that we're handing over would be great for using for that. And so if we're gonna move really fast, I don't think we can do it with county.
But can you do it alone, especially in an austerity budget?
I mean, we're handing that money over right now. So even if we were to cut it...
But respectfully, you're handing over a tiny, tiny portion of the joint office's budget, which is a part of the reason why current officials have said stay in it, is because look for your money. You're getting huge bang for your buck, considering that, like, you're giving like...
A fifth.
A fifth of a budget and getting all the results, which are terrible results, granted, but...
And I think county should keep working on the parts with their, you know, four-fifths that they're working on, but just providing some order to street camping. I actually don't... It doesn't require a lot of... It doesn't require infrastructure. It doesn't require these big expenses. And so just having some funds to stabilize that, I think, reduces the demand on fire, on Boick, on police, and actually makes delivery of services more efficient, because we can remove the anonymity and sort of the... and provide geographic stability. And, you know, we did it all the time in the Army. In a weekend, we'd set up, "Hey, 2,000 people need sanitation and a place to be. It can be done," and not with massive amounts of money.
Okay.
It's great when you have command control.
Yeah.
I think we have to stay in right now. I would rather take a different approach. I used to think we just needed better leadership, but I think we need to use more persuasion. We need to persevere. We need to respect the county, and we need to work around them. And we need to convince them that they're gonna have to pay a lot more for our task sites, a lot more than we have. I think that realignment, staying aligned with them, is really important in convincing them to invest even more.
I tend to agree with Olivia on this. I think that our task is to build the administrative capacity of that boundary between the city and the county. This county has the dollars. People in this town are burned out on voting for things and not seeing the effect. And so we have an obligation to stay in, fill the gaps that currently exist, and build a public relationship there.
Great. Chad?
Yeah, I think we should stay in the joint office. I think that they are making progress under Danfield. I think that the idea of withdrawing would be really risky, and it would only work if your plan is to have like a military-style roundup of every homeless person and just do it like we're doing what they're doing at Grants Pass, where you just got sanctioned camping with a big fence around it and patrols, but very little actually being done to transition people to permanent housing or get them treated. I think that we've gotta be able to work on, like the old phrase, if you wanna go fast, go alone. If you wanna go far, go together. This is a case in which it's absolutely true.
Great. Sophie, you want to take a few questions?
Sure, yeah. I just have some individual questions. Eli, I assume you got the endorsement of the Place Association?
Yes.
Can you demonstrate a place where you disagree with the union?
Where I disagree with the union? You know, I don't even know what union, like, where the union has a clear stance in the day-to-day working.
Sure. What about the... They tried to put a measure on the ballot to basically undo the police, the new Police Accountability Commission. Would you have been in support of that?
I think we're gonna have to see how this plays out, how the new commission works. I have concerns about it. I think the consolidation of the three different oversight groups into one is good. I volunteered on the police review board for the last, like, year and a half. So I hope it's an independent fact-finder and does a good job of finding that balance, but stuff like that.
Not to push the issue, but the measure that they were gonna put on the ballot would basically unravel the entire thing.
Yeah.
I mean, were you in support of that?
I don't know. I think the... I think that was the safe answer, probably, right? That because we're uncertain of what we're getting, that that would have been a more certain outcome and would have provided oversight.
So you still think it would have provided oversight, what they wanted to look at? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it still, I had the, like, the chief and the mayor providing the ultimate decision, which was the main difference, and now it's gonna be the actual oversight body. Yeah, I don't think it's bad or good. I just, I hope we can find the right balance. If it does, fantastic.
Do you think the PPA is too powerful? Do you think they have outsized influence?
I don't think so. Obviously, they do contract negotiations. They do the regular stuff that unions do. But, you know, obviously, we wouldn't be getting this new council if they were in total control in the first place. Yeah.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Just to riff off what Eli was saying, is that they're gonna get something like 12 and a half million dollars. That's a lot of money in a tight budget time, and I don't think that money comes out of the police budget. I think it comes out of general funds to pay for them, and I'm concerned about that. I think at some point, I might want to... I think at some point I might want to revisit that, that budget. That's a lot of money.
Mitch, I'm curious where you stand on this because I think you've been a big proponent of this new system. And what is it, 5% of the, you want to give us 5% of the police budget? Do you think that's an, do you think that's an appropriate amount? Do you think it's too little, too much?
I think that's appropriate, yeah. And I, I support the original measure as pass made to 2% of Portlanders. You know, the Portland Police Bureau got an extra $20 million in the last budget cycle in a period where they can't already staff their full, authorize allocations. And so I think if we want to move forward with trust, I think it's meaningful and reasonable to say that should come from that budget.
And where, if that's going to be roughly 11 to 12 million dollars, where would you cut that money from in order to fully fund this?
The police budget.
The police budget, okay. Chad, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Washington County Democrats, did they revoke their endorsement of you or reconsider it?
No.
Okay, tell me what happened there because I understand something took place.
Oh, I think there was a question about it, but no, the meeting last night, they maintained the endorsement.
Okay, and what was the question about?
Oh, somebody just asked about the donor swapping and wanted more context. So I told them the exact same things that I told you.
And what was the context around? I mean, what, can you tell me what you told them?
Oh, well, they read the article in the Willamette Week and there were concerns about it. And so they, you know, put it up to the whole members to say, you know, is this still the person that we want to endorse? And the answer is yes.
And what'd you tell them about the donor swapping and about your participation?
Sure. So we are on an email thread that has almost every candidate, I think all the candidates in this room are on this one. And people ask all kinds of questions here, like things about compliance. And somebody started a thread for like donations. And we were already hundreds of donations above the threshold to qualify and weren't going to need any candidate's help to get to 750 to get to the next tier. But we decided to join in just to show mutual appreciation, kind of a good faith thing to support other candidates. I know that 69 candidates across this city have donated to other people and also received donations. Based on like everything I saw, I didn't really see a clear difference between what we were doing and those other things. But we found out that there might be a compliance problem. We've, because you emailed, and as soon as there was even the possibility of it, instantly returned the donations. It was $145. And I've asked other candidates to do so as well.
Do you know if they have?
I do not know. No one's publicly said anything. Everything I do is completely transparent and open to every candidate. It's really important. So if I ever make a mistake, like I'm going to have a neon sign around it and you're going to know because that's just kind of like, we're trying to run a campaign with a lot of integrity.
Thank you. Stan, you, the, I think you were leading the Pearl District Neighborhood Association when it, when it gave We Hard Portland, We Hard Seattle, $10,000.
Yes.
Kevin Dolgren was the, the big person with that. Obviously, he's been indicted on theft and fraud.
Right.
Looking back, does that change your perception of the neighborhood association funding that program? Do you still think it was a wise and responsible program or has it made you reconsider?
Yes, I, I think it was wise. We learned a lot out of that program. And what came out of that was the development of the Northwest Community Conservancy. So we learned how we get out on the streets, how we talk to campers, how we build trust with them, how we can get them into services. So we learned a lot from that. And it's unfortunate that what turned out, what happened with Kevin. But I was also in the streets when we were going out there trying to clean things up. And I learned a lot. We all learned a lot. And that's how we're able to create this conservancy right now. The conservancy in the 18 months that we've been in existence as a nonprofit, we have gotten 1,500 people into services or into shelter or even a bus ticket to get them back to their, their family in Pennsylvania, which was one example. So this has been very successful. And we, unlike the county, we provide our metrics every single month.
Is this the 501(c)(3)?
Yes.
And when did you guys found it?
I'm sorry?
When did, when did you find this?
It's back, I'd say March of 2023.
So about a year and a half.
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Okay, okay. And since Kevin has been indicted, have you guys had any communication with him?
None whatsoever.
Okay, okay. One more question, Chad. There was, I believe there was an interaction between your campaign manager and I think Olivia at a recent campaign event where your campaign manager had taken one of her signs and brought it over saying it had been placed incorrectly. One of you, I mean, you are probably the two with the most direct knowledge of that. Can one of you explain what occurred?
I, yeah, I can.
Since I was the recipient.
Go ahead.
I was sitting, talking to another candidate and the campaign manager for Chad came over with my sign. And he said, I found this near a bus stop or near a park. I pulled it up. I thought you might want to have it back. I kind of went into shock because I think that might be against the law to pick up somebody's sign. Maybe he was doing me a favor, but I hope he never touches one again. And it didn't give me a chance to talk to maybe the property owner around there who made a mistake, maybe a supporter. I would have liked to have that opportunity. So if it happens again, I hope that somebody will call me and not pick up my sign and bring it to me. Were you aware of what occurred?
No, I wasn't. I found out after the function in Hillsdale. And my campaign manager told me that one of the many illegally placed signs that Olivia has, this one was egregious. It was by a bus stop. And he didn't want to get her in trouble by reporting it and being a tattletale. So he just picked it up and brought it to her and said, hey, you know, this was illegally placed. Here it is now, you can redeploy it.
Well, can you clarify what you mean by many illegally placed signs?
I mean, there's just loads of signs all over that are placed in.
My signs?
Olivia's signs or?
No, not in the right of way. They're in people's yards. I challenge you to give me the proof of that.
Okay, Jonathan can send you the picture because he took a picture.
That would be great. Let me know. That would be kind.
Who would you report that to if you were to report?
I believe that it goes to either PBOT or ODOT. I don't know because we don't report this. This is one that Jonathan did you a favor.
Maybe you can just let me know where the sign is next time.
I will say that.
Give me an opportunity.
I will say that I knew that, that this would be a sensitive thing and I advised him that that was probably not wise.
No.
But also I think that, you know, we all want to play by the same rules.
I, I challenge you to tell me where my signs are illegally placed. I give them to homeowners, they put them in their yard. I'd be very curious. I haven't seen one like that. I have seen other people like that, but I don't report them, but don't do me a favor.
That's all my specifics.
Well, in that case, but.
Can I ask a quick, Mitch, as an economist, what do you think of the PSF tax and the preschool for all tax as tax policy?
I think they're great and here's why. So we've got a huge climate deficit that we need to make on the investment side to make our city resilient and to hit our climate goals. And so while, you know, there's a lot of money in the fund right now for PSF, you're going to need a percent of that to be able to deploy those, those programs. And it's earmarked for that, which is not something that we always have, right? And things that are long-term investments oftentimes get short shrift in the budgeting process. So that's the value of PSF on that, on that side for the, did you say the preschool tax?
Yeah, I know it's a county thing, but.
Yeah.
It's, it's one that's, I mean, when we hear about people leaving, that's the one that really gets people moving.
I'm glad you brought it up because while it is a county issue, it has become a big narrative in this race for all the candidates. You know, there was a, there's a slide shared by Mike Wilkerson of ECO Northwest. I'm sure you've seen the slide. The data series diverges for, I think, starting around 2016 where it's adjusted gross income for people leaving the county by household filer. And then compare that to people coming in the county and you see this sort of scary picture where our tax base is fleeing. That's a misleading statistic for two reasons. One, you don't know, it comes from the IRS migration data and that data cannot tell you the distribution of the income of people leaving. All it can tell you is the sum of the adjusted gross income. And then if you take that and divide it by number of households, you'll get a number. But if you haven't experienced the statistics, you know that if you have just a couple wealthy households leaving, you can pull the average up. By the way, in 2022, the average is $104,000 for a family, a household leaving. That's well below the preschool tax threshold. And so the, the idea is the people, the people who are leaving are people who are in their kind of prime family formation years with middle incomes, who can't afford to buy a house in the city. And that's why they're, that's why they're leaving.
So this idea that wealthy people are leaving is kind of a canard, right?
There may be some wealthy people leaving, but our tax base is not. And in fact, on page 31 of the adopted budget, we've got some population, sort of demographic data. And the share of households in Portland earning above $200,000 per year is growing steadily. And it goes back to that same.
So Mitch, the fact that we've got the highest tax, margin tax rate in America right now as an economist, doesn't concern you?
No, I mean, Manhattan has a really high margin tax rate and they've got a pretty robust economy. What matters is the economic development engine of the city. And I am concerned.
The most recent report has Multnomah County 98 out of 100 in terms of job growth in this country.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to have an investment program that diversifies our downtown. Right now, it's just a tourist, you know, destination. That's a monoculture type of approach and it's, it's vulnerable to things like a pandemic. It's also vulnerable to interstate policy from the Fed. And so you need a sort of, as an economist, you need a bottoms-up kind of growth engine for demand. So higher wages, lower cost of housing and a more heterogeneous investment pattern downtown and not just hotels.
Interesting. Can I make a comment on that? I mean, I don't want to argue the, the numbers, but I'm just, I want to say that we have aspirations beyond our ability to pay, I think. We always look for the next shiny object at the sacrifice of our essential services. And this is always a conundrum for local government and tax policy. I, I want us to get back to essential services. I don't know if we can dial back those measures and yeah, they were, they were popular, but they're producing a lot more money than we expected. And I'm really concerned about the disinvestment in our infrastructure and our essential services.
How would you fix that imbalance? I think that there is, there is a popular perception, and I'm not going to say whether I agree with it, but there's certainly a popular perception that there are enormous pools of money for specific projects, some of which we might not need, and not enough money for the essential services that say the Parks Bureau provides.
What's a, what are, what are, what are one of those projects?
PSF is overflowing.
Oh, PSF, okay. I thought maybe you were talking about something specific, a project. No, I think that we should broaden the definition of what we can use the PSF money for. And I think the city has been doing that gradually. I mean, potholes is an issue. I mean, that's, you can consider it an environmental issue. It's a safety issue. As a bicyclist, I'm confronted with those all the time. And if we don't fix our streets, they're going to deteriorate to the point that it's going to be a lot more expensive to fix them. And there's lots of investments like that around the city, asset management. We're not doing anything about that. We need to, we need to look a little more broadly at what that money can be spent for.
I mean, I would tend to agree with Olivia on that expenditure side and the broadening piece. I mean, particularly with PSF. I mean, there are things you can do with the PSF fund that stretch your general fund dollars, like in the Portland Housing Bureau, they partner with PSF to pick up the side of the cost structure that is for energy efficiency. That's a really, a smart use of money. PBOT, you can maybe use PSF for the active transportation investments and then free up funds that would have been spent on that for pothole development. So I think there's some overlap.
Can we just ask you quickly, what's the one endorsement you've received that you're proudest of? We'll start with you, Olivia.
Northwest Oregon Labor Council.
Okay. Eli?
Mingus Mads.
Stan?
I would say all four sitting commissioners and district attorney-elect Nathan Vasquez and.
Just for one.
Oh, just for one? Okay. Let me say, let me say.
No, 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 it's all right, Stan. You're done. Chad?
Dacey a great word. That's a very tough endorsement to get.
Okay. BUAA Local 290 was my father's union.
Sweet.
Lightning round. Do you think, and we'll start, Mitch, with you and we'll go around the table and we'll start doing this back and forth. We're going to do this real fast. These are one-word answers.
One.
Do you think, maybe there could be two words I could live with that. Do you think the Portland Police Bureau needs fewer cops, more cops, or have the right number right now? I hate this question. Right number right now?
Fill vacancies. More.
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 Great. Did the, did the Oregon legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing hard drugs, including fentanyl?
Yes.
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 No.
No.
Okay. Are you in support of the Clinton Triangle, which is the city's first large campsite, the task site? Yes or no?
Yes.
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 Easy, yes.
It was two words, but I.
Oh, sorry.
Well, you said you could maybe do two.
But I appreciated that you had a little commentary without going on too long about it. Did you agree to or ask any fellow candidates to swap campaign donations with you?
No.
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 Yes.
No.
Okay. And, oh, this is my favorite. This is actually, this one you can go on a little longer about. Based on your knowledge of City Hall, what is the one bureau or division that you would most like to audit?
Ooh, wow. Most like to audit? Maybe Parks.
Good. I mean, I know it's not governmental, but can I say JOHs?
Sure.
I would say Parks.
Downtown Clean and Safe.
Portland Housing Bureau.
Great. Which member of the current city council do you believe has done the most for this city?
Carmen Rubio.
Carmen Rubio.
I would probably say Carmen, close between Carmen and Dan.
Okay.
Dan Ryan.
Carmen.
Okay. We kind of already went over this one, but I would like to just get it on the record. Do you support what the city did last year? This is a Carmen Rubio proposal, in rerouting PSF dollars to exist, to backfill existing budget holes?
Yes.
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 No.
Okay. Okay. Okay, one more.
I'm sorry, that was unclear as to which thing you were talking about.
Well, let's see.
Was this the Fire Department?
Well, there was a large swath of these, and I can understand if you would say I'm a traitor of some and not others.
It's like 180 million of PSF dollars, I think more was used.
Can I change my answer to not all?
Sure. There were a lot, right? So like, I understand that you might not agree with all of them, or that you don't agree with any of them, in case. Who is, and I really enjoy the friction this question causes, who is the one person at this table who you would most like to serve on City Council with? Chad Lottis.
Mitch Green.
Olivia Clark.
I'll say Olivia.
Oh, my God. Once again. Well, we're going to elect six, right? Can I have two?
No, no.
No? I demand two. Well, based on qualities, let me just think about this out loud for a second, and somebody who compliments my experience, because his experience is really at the 5,000-foot level.
You've got to answer it.
Not the 30,000.
I actually really respect that you're filibustering, but you have to say a name.
It's really hard, because there are other people in the room that are much more like me.
You want to write it down and slide it over?
I, I have to say, please forgive me, everybody but Eli.
Okay. That is the end of my questions. If anybody has anything else, we have like two minutes before we got to ask the final question.
Why no on Measure 110? Why shouldn't we have kept that in place and not have, why shouldn't the legislature have changed that?
I think it was reactive, and Measure 110 was about building a system that enables decarceration. Now, we didn't do very good on building the systems, but we didn't give it very long, and that's why I say no.
Okay, all right. Who else didn't know?
Yeah.
Same?
Yeah, I mean, we're repeating the exact same mistake, flipping the switch on criminalization and decriminalization doesn't get anybody treated. So we're now criminalizing it and putting people in jails that are not prepared to take people through medical detox. This is going to be very risky, so the treat, the focus needs to be on fixing the problem and giving people treatment.
Okay. And then on PSF, you, you want to keep it going into these small community groups that are having trouble absorbing the money and accept my premise here?
No, actually...
Am I wrong about that?
No, I'm actually in support of broadening who the recipient is and helping the kind of grant-making process be inclusive, but also city bureaus.
Isn't that what Carmen did? She moved some of the money into...
But it's the process that matters to me. I don't, I don't want there to be a slippery slope of saying, well, we've done a bad job managing our general fund budget, so let's just go take these climate funds, which voters elected for that purpose, and use it to backfill. But I don't think there's anything wrong with the city or TRIMET or Metro Government or even the county getting in line and saying, I think I've got a good use for those dollars.
Okay, I have one more question.
Yep.
Who's the city commissioner that you think has done the least for the city?
The least?
Yeah. Sorry.
Geez. Game show time.
Maybe so. Okay. Eli?
I mean, he's got the shortest term, but I guess, I guess Renee.
Yeah, it's a tough one, really putting us on the spot.